Hi Kwame.
I didn't see.
We'll be ready in a second.
I can be right home.
We're ready on this end.
The city of Lawrence, do you remember? Just some of the things.
Good evening. It is Wednesday, July 16th at 6:31. I am calling this laws and rules meeting to order. I am Chair Michelle Hirsch. In attendance, we have Alderman Rennie Scott Childress, Alderman Bob Dennison, Alderwoman Sarah Pastie, and Alderwoman Carol Mickens. And then city staff, we have Matt Jankowski, Corporation Counsel, and Jeff. Sorry. Jack Scootabaker, Project Manager. So it is the discretion of the Chair whether or not to allow public comment. And I was contacted about an item number eight on the agenda. So I'm going to allocate to 645 for comment. So if you want to maybe come to the front of the table and just state your name and for the record.
My name is Lorraine Corrigno. I am the Coordinator of the Hudson Valley Air Quality Commission. And four of us are here today to speak to you. Also served six years on the Conservation Advisory Council as the Air Quality Chair. So I wanted to speak to you about a letter that we had written to Mayor Noble and spoken about at the Common Council in May regarding the wildfires here in Hudson Valley in November. At the time, the Governor issued a burn ban. But the burn ban, in fact, allowed outdoor burning such as campfires, cooking fires, fire pits. So therefore, most, almost all the executives in Colchester County enacted by Executive Board a strict explicit burn ban because they recognized that the conditions were high fire risk and that it was implicit, that it was a matter of urgency that they enacted these. So they disallowed fire pits, cooking fires, bonfires, no outdoor burning of any kind. But Kingston did not. And it seems there may be some confusion about whether Kingston actually has the burn ban in place. The burn ban that is, I think, in question is the one that the D E C the D E C House Unspoken that covers these or municipalities with more than 20,000 residents. And that disallows brush burning. But everything else goes. And that was even the case during the wildfires. The Governor did not act to limit these other types of outdoor burning. So the point that we made in our letter was that Kingston is a densely populated area. The houses are sited closely together. They're made of wood, most of them. And that it's really, I think, a situation in which we need to act as a community to protect not just our health, our property, our lives, but our air quality. So that we're requesting that there be a a burn ban, an explicit and strict burn ban, such as the ones that were instituted by other municipalities during that time in Kingston in times of elevated fire risk. So we appreciate your giving us a chance to speak with you tonight. Experts say that urban fires are the most difficult to fight. So that's a thought that emerged very tragically from the California situation. So I'm sure, you know, knowing all of your progressive policies, you will want to move to do something like this. And we appreciate that. So thank you, Umtiti. Let a couple of other members speak to you.
Thank you, Lorraine.
All right.
Hi, I'm Amy Lowenpar. I am with HVAC. Just to support everything that Lorraine expressed and also that I'm having a hard time wondering what an objection to this might be. And Mayor Noble and everybody has done such an amazing job building Kingston up, making it into what it is today. And I think we want to be known for something other than having a catastrophe. But fire, I live on Fair Street between St. James and Franklin. And there are fires in people's gardens, barbecues, open pits all the time. We have tons of trees back there. It's kind of a scary situation. You cannot be sure that the fire has gone out when you turn in for the night. Right across the street from my house, we had two fires back to back in two, right in the immediate vicinity. One of those fires, the more recent one, happened at 3:30 in the morning while we were all swooping through it. Very, very frightening. So if there is a defensible, explicit reason for not enforcing the burn ban within the City of Kingston during the normal months, I'm happy to know more about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Robert Dan Shal. I'm also on B CH. I scheduled a meeting with Randy. We prepped the letter to Mayor Noble. Based on the similarities that we saw between Alta Dina and Kingston, they had similar populations, similar style houses. But I think the thing that really got my attention was that what's really changed environmentally are the high winds. And that's what people seem to forget. And so when we found that there was not really a burn ban, it was burn ban in, it was something I used to say basically, but it really wasn't an actual burn ban. If people are committed to have fires, you know, in fire pits and so forth. And the dry conditions are such that it would be quite easy to start a local fire in our local neighborhood. So once you have high winds and somebody lights a spark, we can't absolutely prevent it, but we can certainly do something to make sure that we've done everything we could do during these times when the conditions are so right, you know? And I think the other thing is because it happened in Alta Dina in California, we think it's not going to happen here, you know? It's so different, but it's not. Nothing's different anymore. Everybody said, "It has 90-degree weather and thunderstorms." Everybody has dry conditions and floods. And as a community, I think we need to recognize the risk. And I just want to emphasize that the thing for me that changed was the high winds because the form take much to let the fire up once the winds come up. And we've had increasingly more and more high winds in our area. Along with flooding. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Brayson. I live in the town of Rochester. And carrying my concerns about air quality to the legislature person I'm finding out. And that's why I'm affiliated with these folks. And I appreciate all the things that Kingston has done in terms of air quality and addressing these issues. But I urge you to take stronger steps. And I'll leave you with one image. This week, on the northern rim of the Grand Canyon, the base lodge burned down. And that was a fire that they thought they had under control. And the winds shifted and it's gone. So that's a national monument to them. And we have a city full of national monuments here. So please, everything you can do to enforce fire discipline when it's really needed would be appreciated by everybody in the county.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I was just going to leave you. Michelle, HVAC recently published the first annual air quality report at the City of Kingston.
Okay, great. Thank you. Fantastic.
And thank you so much.
Yeah, so this will be, this item is on the agenda for number eight on the agenda. So I don't know if you're going to say or.
No.
Okay, all right. I'll be in touch with you. And thank you for coming. It's nice to have people come and be engaged. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Can we have an empty coffee for the lady?
No, I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it here.
No, it's not. Okay.
Yeah, so Andrea sent in a letter, but I don't, she attached, like she sent in a communication, but didn't attach the letter. And she's not going to be here this evening.
We have Chief Bray's.
I have not spoken with him yet. I was expecting Andrea to be here, you know, person shot. So since she put the communication in, but we've applied and followed along.
And I guess my question would be, what are next? Let's find you a letter and then.
Yeah, we do have some language, you know, in the code, but let's talk, speak about it when we get to number eight. Yeah, so, okay, thank you. All right, so we have, the first item on the agenda is open space designations. Julie Noble, are you here, Julie?
I'm here.
Hi.
Here there.
Welcome. How are you? Cool?
Good. How's everybody doing?
Good, thank you. All right, so we have a list of 17 parcels here. Do you want to tell us what's going on?
Sure. So the City of Kingston in the last couple of years has been looking at how we can intentionally preserve open space. There are a number of different means. The Community Preservation Plan by far is one of the most successful things that we've done. And in doing that, we also, and you also all approved a recent acquisition of 70 acres of land in the Rhonda Uplands area. And that we were temporarily calling the Kingston Wilderness Property. We're calling it Rhonda Uplands for now until we have a more formal name for that. We did that in collaboration with Sina Hudson. And I would guess that the intent would be that the Community Preservation Plan would be paying that back. But in addition to that, in a recent, well, probably not too recent, a couple of years ago, when BarTech and Dan Baker and the mayor and I were looking at surplus properties and the designation of surplus properties at that time and how to work out what kind of designation they would have. One of those was an open space designation. And we looked at a number of different parcels to to make sure that the best use wasn't something higher like housing or municipal use for storage or something else. And that would also align with the city's open space plan. And we did identify parcels along, primarily along with TWAF scale. And I can show you a map if I, if you'd let me share my screen. And ultimately, what I'm asking for tonight is for these parcels, 17 of them, to be officially designated as open space by the Common Council. And so that means that they would be subject to rules and regulations as promulgated by the Parks and Recreation Department. These would be treated differently than parks. So they wouldn't fall under the same, you know, dawn to dusk, you know, no dogs, whatever, that kind of thing, whatever the rules are in parks. These have their own separate rules that Parks Department would promulgate, but that they would be officially designated as open space, allowing the protection of that space in perpetuity. So on the list that I sent the letter, the majority, not the majority, but like everything that's on Abiel Street. All the first seven on the list are the Kingston Wilderness Properties. And then the others are parcels that we protected, that we're looking to protect along Wilbur Avenue and Wall Street. I can show you the map of the locations. I don't know if I'm going to be able to share, but let's try. We'll see how it goes.
It looked like you were made co-host.
Oh, cool. Then I can. All right, so hopefully you see this screen. And first, this is the corridor along Wilbur Avenue. So you can see the inset on the right-hand side where we are in the city and the essentially riparian buffer park, park it, riparian buffer land along the Twof Skill Creek. So if you travel up Wilbur Avenue on the left-hand side, it's kind of a deep valley that goes down into the creek. It's absolutely unbuildable and is helpful in helping to slow down the flow of the Twof skill when it gets flashy and swollen with water. So that was valuable, is valuable property for us to keep open and would not have any kind of parkland use. So this wouldn't be open space in this case. Wouldn't mean come here and, you know, play a game or anything. It's just keep it as forest. And then the other parcel, parcels, you see here are the yellow. That's the Rhonda Uplands. The seven parcels of that we just purchased with Sina Hudson. Yeah, and so the, those are the parcels that we're looking to preserve. By the way, this, this one on Wilbur also includes the ones on Wall Street. So between Wall Street and Wilbur Avenue, that's numbers eight through seventeen. It's like a lot of any bitty little parcels that make up this piece of land. Sina Hudson is very interested and one of the boxes they like to check on all their parcels that they purchase is a designation of open space. So they have also requested that we do this for the parcels per Kingston Wilderness. They've asked repeatedly for us to be doing this. And we also just feel that this is an important way to go that final step of we've taken this off the tax rolls. We've designated this as officially open space. And that's what I'm requesting for this evening. I didn't put a committee report together until three seconds ago. Michelle, I did just email it to you, which I know has zero value whatsoever, but at least you could see it.
So I'm just going to open it up for questions, ready?
Julie, two of these number six and sevens seem to suggest they're in the town of Ulster. What is that? How are we able to designate something in town of Ulster?
I was advised to include those on the list. Maybe Matt can speak to that. I don't know if he can or not.
Yeah, I think that would be an issue where technically you don't have authority to designate property as an open space. We can do other things as owner of the property to help protect it and assure that it does remain as an open space. This as a designation, we wouldn't need the substance of the town of Ulster since the properties are located there. But all the other properties, it's there as long as they're located in the city of Kingston. And you might want to correct me, or is the entirety of those parcels in Ulster or is a portion of them, okay?
They're all entirely in the town of Ulster. So, so we can't just say like they're ours. We want them to remain open space even though they're not in our town?
Do you believe we have the authority to do that? We would have to have them do likewise a resolution designation.
Okay. We commodify the committee report to say all of these minus six and seven designated as open space and we request the town of Ulster to do the same in theirs. Or remove them. I mean, if we, if removing them, it makes it easier. But I just.
Where designations and requesting that town of Ulster consent to designation of this open space and listed to parcel owners.
And just to be clear, we own all of these parcels, right? The city does?
Right, okay.
Anyone else?
Could I just chime in on that? Sorry. I, I think the, the interest that Sina Hudson has, and I think that the common council has in, you know, designating these parcels is to be able to protect them from future development by us and future decision makers in city government. So I think that's really, it really has nothing to do with the land use from a zoning perspective. It doesn't really have anything to do with the town of Ulster at all. It just has to do with how is the city of Kingston going to use these parcels? And if we don't designate the ones that we have in the town of Ulster as open space, it means that some other mayor or housing director or development, economic development director that the city has two, three, five years from now could go ahead and just, you know, propose to the common council to sell those off for housing or to develop a commercial building on those sites. I think what we're doing is we're setting a policy statement today that says that all of these parcels are going to be used only by the city of Kingston for open space purposes. That's, I think, why I felt it was important to include the town of Ulster sites because if not, it would allow us as a city to do whatever we want on the site that is outside of what Sina Hudson was envisioning when they gave us half the money to buy those properties. So it's like us basically putting our public statement down that this is how we intend to use these properties. I, I hope that maybe that helps clarify.
Yeah.
So I have a question. So will Sina Hudson or the city like be, like, will we be paying on the back taxes that are already owed? Like, will there be any compensation in any way from like the, the community fund?
So we pay, like, so at closing, you know, all of the tax bills were settled and, you know, we paid our share. The private property owner paid their share. There were no taxes like in arrears on any of these. But we will, as part of the parcels in the town of Ulster, the town board has exempted those parcels from the town of Ulster taxes. Except we do have to pay the special benefit taxes, which would be for fire protection. And maybe the library tax, which I think equates to about fourteen dollars a year. It's something very small. And so, but there is, going forward, you know, as Julie mentioned earlier, we do hope that the Community Preservation Fund, as it generates revenue, would go to pay off the city's portion of the bond that we took out to purchase those parcels. Sina Hudson is not looking for their portion to be paid back. They basically gave a donation. But our portion, we think we're going to help be able to pay back the bond that we took on behalf of our residents.
This is just a follow-up question. So was the town of Ulster required to then transfer or deed the property to us if we purchased it?
No, because we didn't buy them from the town. We purchased, we bought them from a private property owner. And so the city of Kingston actually owns a ton of property in tons of other communities. So if you think about our, the city of Kingston property along our reservoirs and our water districts. And so it is not uncommon for us to purchase property in the towns surrounding our city. It just, in this case, it happens to be a new purchase, but we actually own a lot of property in other jurisdictions. Woodstock, Ulster, Town of Kingston. Now, yeah.
We're taking over.
Yeah, that's right. So there's several parcels that are listed on South Wall Street. And in South Wall Street, there's a lot of flooding. So I'm wondering if there will be an easement. Shouldn't it be necessary to do any infrastructure in that area that the city could have financing at us and ultimately hold the property?
I'll just speak to this, to the South Wall Street. Oh, am I able to answer that?
Yeah.
I'll share my screen again because these parcels that I showed you before, these are where South Wall Street are. So I don't know if I can annotate. This is South Wall Street here. So these parcels are the ones that are on South Wall and then these are the ones on Wilbur. So they're all along Twof Skill. I'm sorry, Terrell, what was the question about them?
Has to do with, there are some residential homes
Yeah.
in and through that area that have quite a bit of flooding.
Yep.
So this, I know that the city several years ago put in some sort of drainage. But if it needed to be the piping increased or decreased or or some other remediation method that would have to go into place there, would there be an easement for the city to do that kind of infrastructure work?
Well, so first, these, let me just parse out here. This, all of this, this whole eco corridor, these parcels here, there's twelve acres total, has nothing to do with Sina Hudson. So the only Sina Hudson purchases were the seventy acres of the Rhonda Uplands. These parcels all here are, we didn't have to buy these. These are city of Kingston property. These have been ours. They are still ours. Unless they were taken for foreclosure, I can remember if that's, maybe the mayor remembers, but. So like, like you said, there's homes. Okay, so there are homes like splattered in here. There's some here. There's some, I don't know, I'm using yellow. Can't see yellow at all. Red. There's some here, here, here. The, the ones that more likely tend to get flooded are like those down in this space because these folks in this area like live up a hill. These folks live up a hill. This, these folks are kind of low. But since they're our properties, we can do whatever kind of maintenance and everything that we want to do on them. And Sina Hudson doesn't have any kind of involvement at all. We can do whatever maintenance we need to. And in terms of working with homeowners and other things, there would be nothing stopping us from doing that.
And we did just approve some funding for three culvert, I think Chapel, Wilbur. Get there. Okay. Not there. Okay.
Michael?
So I was going to ask, is this going to, this not interfere with those culvert projects at all? No.
It's not going to interfere with that. I mean, at this point, there's no, I have no intent for any management of the property. They're not, they're not, haven't been and will not be mowed. There's not going to be any assets on them. This is, this is literally just making sure that, as the mayor said, the next administration doesn't say, hey, let's turn this into a waterslide. So there's, there's no intention to, to, to change anything besides on paper.
So regarding public access and you said the rules regarding open spaces have been promulgated yet. I'm just curious, will the public be able to access these parcels and utilize the waterway and forage for the ramps and the berries that grow there?
I think that the, when the Parks Department creates these rules, it will be different probably for the Rhonda Uplands properties than it would be for these Twof skill properties. The Rhonda Uplands is more like a park with safer access and could have trails and things like that. These parcels along the Twof skill are really extremely steep, narrow, like erosion would happen immediately if you're stepping on it. It's like swamp mania. Not really desirable, but I would guess that to articulate that we don't want people going there, we would probably create some sort of rules for those spaces themselves. And maybe it would be not like this parcel, but if, maybe if it's like this range or this corridor or whatever. I would have to, I haven't walked the, all the parcels on South Wall Street. You could see all of the ones on Wilbur Clear as Day from the road, but all the ones on Wall Street are, first of all, they're fully vegetated, like absolutely vegetated, all, all of them. I would say public land, I mean, I don't want to presume anything. This, those rules and regs would be developed by the Parks Department.
Okay, I'm just putting it out there that I think folks should be able to forage on these public lands.
Oh, I just, my question was, is this, is a designation of open space? Are there any other open space areas within Kingston that have been designated open space or no, this would be the first?
This would be the first. And then we would, moving forward, as lands were preserved or determined, either preserved through the Community Preservation Plan or determined via an evaluation of surplus properties that they don't have a higher value to the city or to the community for housing or something else or resale. Then we would probably do the same evaluation pretty regularly to just see, you know, this little triangular pocket has no other value, so we should designate that as open space, whatever, you know, whatever be the case. So, but short answer is this is the first.
Julie, I have a question. So I'm just looking at the map online with the, the yellow lines and then the red. Does this does this acquisition or protection of open space include that little park, the Wilbur Park where people go?
You're talking about the Rhonda Uplands map?
What?
You're talking about the Rhonda Uplands map?
No, yeah, it's, it's then. Yeah, with the yellow, the green.
This?
The yellow. Yeah. Yes.
Okay, so what we're looking at here is.
The very bottom of the red going toward the, the triangle down there.
So let me just, you're talking about this?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm going to just come closer. I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Was that?
Yeah.
Okay, so what we're looking at here is, let me see here.
So it's like, it's actually where the, your line is, the circle and then the red, the outlined space above it. There's like a little community pocket park down there.
Oh, like on the corner where all the roads converge?
Yes, and there's like a water, others is spring and people go there to get water.
Oh, that's different. Isn't the, the spring, are you talking about the spring down in the town of Ulster?
No.
Is the spring here? Okay. So you're talking about this little place that has a bench on the, on the corner. There's like a book.
Yes.
I think that's already ours.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been used as like a neighborhood park and people do go there to get water. And at some point, we had spoken to the mayor about trying to put in a community and, you know, an agreement for the park.
Okay, so if you're saying, would this be included in that? No, because I didn't include that parcel. But if there's, if you, if we choose to go this route and you adopt this resolution, this could set precedent for them. We could find other parcels like that. Or like, you know, the triangular space between Delaware Avenue and Hasbrook.
Right.
Like those small things could be certainly added to this portfolio.
Okay. Yeah, because that project on Delaware sold out. Yeah, cause that project on Delaware sold out too, so that was supposed to be a little park.
That little triangle on the.
Yes.
By nine, I know it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, um, so I am going to read the resolution that's. So I'm gonna do, Julia, is write out, um. What you wrote, the first part, a resolution ad of the, um, Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York. Uh, to request approvals to designate the following seventeen city parcels as open space. Subject to such rules and regulations as may be promulgated by the City of Kingston Parks and Recreation as per attached, so I don't have to. Write them all out because it's in your letter, it all includes the letter.
And do you need to remove number six and seven, cause there are town of Ulster ones?
So are we gonna do that?
Uh, with that, um, you should leave it in good. And we'll, we'll discuss if there's any additional.
Okay. All right, so can I get a motion and then we'll go into discussion, right? Okay. So. Discussion.
So can we say six and seven is subject to inter, like an inter municipal agreement?
I don't think we need to. I'd just leave it, so for the purposes of what the city's doing, where does it mention yet, whether anything additional needs to be done after the fact, that can be considered after. But right now, it's part of this entire designation.
Okay.
We have, we can break. I'm gonna be careful.
Okay. All right, um, all in favor?
Right.
Hi. Any votes? All right, so, thank you. Thanks, Julie, uh, I, I think this is really exciting, I, you know, I know that area well and it's definitely not buildable space, so. Properties, it's good to have it preserved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the second item on the agenda is also with Julie Noble, our sustainability coordinator, and this is regarding, uh, the. Um, D O S, case in point, wetland restoration and public access improvement, North Street seeker process.
Yes, so, um, this is a project that I will also be coming back after this process. Uh, to finance, uh, next month. Uh, but this is a grant that we received through the Department of State Local Waterfront Revitalization Program. We applied for the grant several years ago and just got into contract, it's taken the state several years of delay to get us into contract for this, but. We're here, and so before, uh, I was advised by the comptroller that. Before bonding, they would want to see seeker completed. So this is a request to begin the seeker process for the property. The property is a. Two pieces of, two parcels of land on North Street at the bottom of East Union. When you come down East Union, there's a stop sign at North Street. There are two houses, one is off the road, in the water, and one is up by the road. Also getting flooded, those two houses have been condemned, they're not occupied. This funding from Department of State is twofold, one is to demolish the structures on the property. The second is to take that space, and there's like a little driveway right past the stop sign that goes down into it. Take that space and make that into a public access site with a boardwalk and a pier. That would go just right to the edge of the train tracks that are there, that are no longer usable, and people can use that for. Bird watching, fishing, perhaps kayaking, uh, and we would put in a small, uh. Parking area, like six spots. Um, I will show you the, uh, proposed design, this is. Um. This is, we put together by our engineering department, um, but, uh, so here's the. Here's where the road, East Union comes down, this is North Street. This is the wetland at Kingston Point, this is the nonusable drain track. These are the two parcels, they are owned by the City of Kingston now, and there are one, two, three structures on them that would be demolished. Uh, we would be, um, using, uh, going out to bid this fall. Uh, to hire a, an asbestos abatement firm to remove any asbestos. And demolish the buildings, hopefully being attacked as many of the trees as possible, but inherently, we're gonna have to get down there with. Some heavy machinery, so, uh, some of the trees will need to be removed, I'm not, I don't have a count of that yet. Um, so that would be phase one, which would happen this fall before October thirty first. I would have to take the trees out because of that requirement by the D E C. And then, uh, possible demolition in October, November. And then, um, the design. Is proposed, uh, and if, and this will still need to go, this is conceptual at this point, it still needs to go through preliminary design and final design and construction. Um, but the proposed, or the conceptual design right now is use the existing. Driveway area, my little drawing thing here. Uh, uh, formalize that, make it, this into a gravel. Six par car spot, and then build a, an ADA accessible boardwalk. Um, here, if you're not familiar with the land, which I wouldn't expect anyone to be, but if you are, aren't, this is from, basically from here. All of this space is, um, like a berm, a plateau that has a. Very old train track going down the middle of it and is very fully overgrown, but anyway, this boardwalk would have a little bit of elevation. And go up and over it just to the end, uh, right by the edge of the water. And I'll show you the last page, oh no, that is the last page, that I had one that showed the elevation, but basically, this would slightly go uphill a little bit to let folks. Kinda hang out there, and so this would, the, the, the. The change in the property would be removal of buildings and addition of a formalized parking lot and this boardwalk. Um, the entire construction is, so ju, is, the design. Sorry, the bidding for the asbestos and the, and the demolition would be this year, and so would the demolition, twenty twenty five. Starting in the fall of this year, October, November, December, and into January, February, we would do public outreach. To understand what people want, this is just an engineering and Julie version of like, hey, what do we wanna do with this site, but the community could say. We want something a little bit different or a lot different. Um, so we would do public outreach and understand, you know, do we want interpretive signage, do we want some sort of. What do we want at the end, do we want it to be accessible to kayaks or fishing or bird watching, or do we want benches, what kind of amenities, if anything? Um, I'm currently not proposing to put in any water sewer, no utilities, it would be just simply. This open space land with the improvement of having actual, uh, parking. And, um, so the public outreach would be this fall, the design would be this fall and into the spring. So we would hire a separate consultant to do the design, and then it would go, get put out to bid for construction in twenty six and be completed by the end of twenty six. I'm here to request that the common council, uh. Um, designate themselves as, as lead agency for this project, um, and. Uh, that it would be an unlisted action and that would suggest a coordinated review, uh, for seeker. To open it up to the involved and interested agencies, um, for their review. I have completed the short environmental assessment form, part one and part two. I don't know if you all got that or not, I did just submit it today, which is not good on my part, but either way. Um, in reviewing that, there is nothing that stands out substantially for any kind of, um. Adverse impacts, it would need permitting through Department of State Coastal Consistency, Department of Environmental Conservation. Office of General Services, State Historic Preservation Art Office and Army Corps of Engineers. Engineers, the entire both parcels is only point five acres, so they're about a quarter acre each. Um, there is, uh, it is permitted under zoning, that it can be, uh, parkland, I confirmed that with BarTech. Um, there are no utility, well, there will no utilities be put onto the site, the buildings have to be demolished. Uh, we're gonna, and I'm working with engineering and building safety on that. Um, building safety has had their eyes on these buildings for a while and they, they need to be taken down. Um, and, uh, what else is relevant? That's probably what is relevant right now.
Is just, are they condemned because there's like flooding there, is that?
Yes, so, um, the one that's really low down is just wet all the time. I mean, just soggy, 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 um, but both of them have been, uh, because of water and flooding repeat and repetitive. Storm damage have just fully deteriorated, there haven't been people living there in a while, several years. Um, and if you drive by it now, unfortunately, there's just like trees down and it's sort of disastrous at this point.
Uh, and then the parking lot, would that have to be raised, sort of like what we're doing at Kingston Point?
It would need to be raised, so, um, and I don't, again, I don't think I have a grading, a graded version of, of the design, but. Um, it would be not at the same plane as the road as in North Street, it would go slightly down the hill. And then probably be like. Halfway between the plane of the road and the, the base, or maybe even higher than halfway. We'd have to evaluate like what type of fill we would need to use, cause we would need to use fill, uh, to, to elevate that space. But the hope would be that we wouldn't actually have to disturb most of the rest of the property at all. Um, if anything, it would be encouraging wetland, um, migration, because. Uh, the water's going to just continue to, to migrate into that space, and so the goal would be to. Encourage and, and adapt to the wetland and the water migration into the space while still keeping it available for public use.
Uh, Michael has a question?
Um, so the, that drive, the existing driveway is, uh, rather steep, are we gonna have to regrade that as well?
Yes.
Um.
Might, we might need to regrade it, but hopefully I won't have to regrade it before I do the demo, um, I don't know why I would, but. Yes, it is steep and deteriorating. So certainly for, for the improvements, I will need to regrade the, the driveway.
So for the, um, the parking lot itself, will that be plowed in the winter?
Uh, yeah, probably not, um, I don't, I haven't thought that far yet, I think that it's gonna probably be. I don't know the answer yet.
Okay, and then is the goal to, are we gonna, in, in any of our, uh, stages of the. Redevelopment of Kingston Point, are we going to be connecting that old rail to the rest of the point?
It's not currently in the design, um, there's no way currently to get from this North Street property. Over to the rest of the Kingston Point without going through water. Uh, and as moments in time and years and months progress, that water will be deeper. Um, so unless we wanna build some kind of bridge or something across, we have not thought of that yet. Despite the fact that I'm working on all different parts of Kingston Point, I haven't connected that in my brain yet or, or physically on paper. I mean, I, I don't wanna rule it out, the train track is never going to be used again, but, um. It gets a little bit more complicated because of the landfill on the other side and not being able to touch it and there's just. I don't know, this is just me vamping, short, the short answer is no, I don't know, no, we haven't talked about that yet.
Thank you.
Tara? Um, and what was the grant amount from the Department of State Local Waterfront Revitalization Program? And what is the total cost of the project?
Yep, one second, let me bring that up. Good question. All right. The project timeline is twenty, is current until twenty twenty nine, the grant award was for five hundred and fifty two thousand five hundred dollars. It's about half a million, and then I ha, and then we have a match of. Fifty two thousand seventy two dollars, so the total project cost. I'm sorry, misspoke, the state funds are five hundred and fifty two thousand five hundred dollars, so I was correct there. The local match, I only read one line, the local match is ninety seven thousand five hundred, and the total budget is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As I mentioned, I have not come to you all yet for, to bond for that money. Um, because Bond Council wants to see seeker completed before approving any bonds.
Okay, so, uh, the city would just be bonding out for the ninety seven K?
I would guess that John would wanna bond for the entire thing, but the financial impact would be the ninety seven five, however, it's actually not the entire ninety seven five. Because on that match, about fifty percent of it is staff time. Um, and so there's only about fifty two thousand dollars budgeted for cash, however, I believe. And I'm still waiting for affirmation on this, I believe that that fifty thousand dollars is actually already budgeted in the building safety. Line for demolition, because they've had their eyes on this, these buildings for several years. I'm still waiting for affirmation on that, so it could be the case that with my, our staff time and the, and the fifty K from building safety. There would actually be zero financial impact for this project, but by the time I come back to you for finance, I'll have those details.
Thank you.
But it hasn't gone out for design yet, so it could theoretically go up, yes, yeah.
Um, I guess anything could theoretically go up. I don't want it to.
But when, I can't, I don't have that budget, uh, I mean, the grant book opened, when did we get this grant, what year?
Uh, let's see, we just, just in, in June got into contract, but I applied for the grant. In two thousand three, and we were awarded in two thousand three, two, three. Two thousand twenty three.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, I'm going to read the resolution, um, a resolution that pursuant to six. N Y C R R, Part six one seven, the City of Kingston Common Council hereby determines. That the Kingston Point Wetland Restoration and Public Access Improvement Project is an unlisted action under seeker. And declares the intent to serve as lead agency under a coordinated review, no financial impact. Um, can I get a motion? Um, that's, I was so good though, guys. Hey, discussion? Um, has everyone looked through the short E A M and the discussion of the month? All good? Everyone's good? Okay, all right, so if we call for a vote, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Julie, oh, you have still one more? Gonna let you go. We're not done with you yet. All right, so next, uh, we have item number three, Kingston Point Beach, New York Swims seeker.
Great, so last month, uh, you all passed a resolution to. Declare yourselves as lead agency and commence a coordinated review for New York Swims. Reminder, New York Swims, my New York Swims project is New York Swims Kingston Point Beach, that's the Kingston Point Beach terracing project. The four million dollar project to terrace the beach so that we save it from erosion and sea level rise and storm surge. So we commenced the seeker process, the coordinator review last month. Um, on June sixth, I sent out all the forms and the seeker documents to. to seventeen interested and involved agencies, including locals and state and federal agencies. They had until July seventh to respond and to consent or not consent for the Common Council to be lead agency. Of all the responses I received, which was about fifty percent, everyone consented. I didn't hear from anyone else, and by default, that means they also consent. And so uh, with that, I also didn't receive any comments about um, concern about the project or notes about the project, and I would suggest, and I'm here tonight, to pass a resolution to have you affirm your role as lead agency, uh, and that it's an unlisted action and make the declaration that it will have no potential significant adverse environmental impact, rendering a negative declaration on this project.
Any questions? No. Yeah, 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 we've been discussing this, and it's actually a, uh, it will have a positive environmental impact, so. So it's a resolution that pursuant to six N Y R C C part six one seven, the City of Kingston Common Council hereby affirms and assumes its role as lead agency after a coordinated review of the Kingston Point Beach New York Swims project an unlisted action under seeker, and that the project will have no potentially significant adverse environmental impacts, and hereby renders a negative declaration in connection with this in action. No financial impact. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Okay, second. All right, any discussion?
I'd just like to point out that I've read the Department of Land Management and the material, I'm confident that this is a negative.
Okay. Great, anyone else?
I should pop this.
Yeah.
You're real.
Okay, all right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any move? See now, sweet, okay. All right, Julie, you can go off to dinner now.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Number four, release of forty-nine Park Street. Erica, you're in. Uh. So this looks like, Matt, do you have anything on this?
I just said what was sent to you, or you guys, and yeah, for the first night today, as I understand, you guys already allowed the property to uh uh, basically be sold without Common Council approval back in twenty-two?
Yeah, resolution one oh five.
And, and now they're looking for additional resolution eliminating all of the uh, previous conditions. Does anyone give a comment on this?
I was not. Maybe ready? Back in the day. Yeah, I don't want to be on the table. It sounds vertical, isn't it? So it's coming back. No, it's the conditions.
Yeah, so this is a property that was admitted back in two thousand ten, uh, for the purpose of being built. It wasn't developed, and there was a condition that if a owner was going to sell property, they would need Common Council's consent. Common Council consented, uh, uh, that's a resolution consenting so that the property could be sold back in two thousand twenty-two, and uh, it's not clear, is this the newer owners, or is this still the same? Okay, so the current owners, so the property apparently was sold back in twenty-two, and then the current owners are are looking to have the previous restrictions, uh, conditions that are in the deed.
So they acquired it for a thousand?
Well, they acquired it for a thousand, I think.
Consideration of one dollar.
No, so that's, every deed says that.
Yes, that's two thousand considering, okay.
And he didn't do any, he didn't meet the conditions that are on the street.
That was a previous owner.
Well, well, nobody asked, right?
Yeah, and it looks like it was sold in two thousand ten, certain conditions. I'm assuming you sold for extremely low, uh, for the purpose of having it developed, considering the conditions that the city wanted at the time. Then, twelve years later, in two thousand twenty-two, uh, you guys passed a resolution basically allowing the property to be sold to the new current owner. Um, and now they're looking for the conditions to be removed. The one thing that does jump out at me here is that these conditions limit the house that are living, the building to being a one or two family residence. Since two thousand twenty-two, you guys have passed a new form-based code, which one of the major goals is to increase the density. So um, that would potentially support, you know, eliminating uh, you know, these previous condition, which limits the property being developed to a one or two family home.
Now, one issue, but what troubles me is the condition of sale, this was developed in a year. You know, building from this, I mean, there was.
Yeah, no, two thousand eleven, somebody dropped the ball. This property should have basically
developed or revert. I mean, that was what it came in, it didn't have to. So to remove the conditions now, it's kind of like, well.
Right, just profiting.
I'm not really, yeah, but we're gonna get to the state.
Michael?
Yeah, without hearing their specific concerns, other than saying that people are less willing to buy this property, I'm a little reticent to consider this, because I don't necessarily view these as particularly virtuous restrictions.
Yes.
And I mean, it's not a huge property, so I'm not sure how many need this. Would you think it'd be able to be built on those? Just like a plan in a
He was planning about the big hill.
Are you, are you making a motion to table it at this point, or?
Not enough to walk table, or just deny?
We had, uh, before you can actually discuss, we need to have.
Do you have a motion to speak some of this?
Yeah, I'm going on the committee report, so. Right, so right now, it's listed sixty-eight thousand nine ninety-nine thousand. I got it, I know. Very developed. It's a full book, I see. Is that the least? So Matt, just anything around those other accounts, all sorts of restrictions that they can.
So what, you know, you guys have the power, this is a request. Um, it doesn't look like there's been any real um, proposed resolution or anything pertaining to this, just that they're requesting that these restrictions be lifted. Obviously, you guys, uh, the council put these restrictions in place. Previously, you um, lifted and allowed it to be sold to the current owners. You guys have the power to keep all of the restrictions in place, to remove any restrictions that you would agree to, or to uh, completely grant it. You know, it's all within your power, so. It sounds to me like you guys probably needed to show information on it.
Yeah, I think that's an idea.
Basically, just have a letter come from this person, so um, that's, that's what I would recommend. And I think you guys should also look at those conditions, because the other ones definitely were put in place for the reason to get this property developed. Um, one that does restrict the um, number of units uh, does seem to be not in accordance with our comprehensive plan, with our zoning code, and uh, probably that would be something that I would say you guys should look into, and see whether or not it's appropriate for those, that specific condition to be on the property.
Okay. So we're just going to handle this. I don't have a resolution. We need more information. All right, moving on. Number five, skate park seeker, um, committee project manager, Jack's. You're gonna make her. Good to see you again, how nice.
Much like Julie, um, in this seeker thought, the seeker process for the focused key box that had the park, uh, this year last month, with the request to have the resolution made. Uh, uh, you declaring your intent to be the agency, wanting to be unlisted, changed with coordinator. Then a resolution was submitted on July seventh. I am preparing the notices to the two agencies that are involved, and we're getting that out this week. And then we'll have thirty days for them to um, dissent or not consent. So uh, I will be back next month with that resolution request, um, and then uh, we bond this having a negative declaration. But in the meantime, I've been here so many times, I've realized that I really never introduced the project to you, other than financial and what it was going to do. So I made copies, I'm unlike Julie, who likes to be on the table and share her screen. I made copies of some snippets of the act here. Um, the application for the grant was, was quite intensive, and it has all kinds of different stuff. I will be emailing that actual application schedule where we can, but I just pulled out a couple snippets of that I wanted to share. That being the location of where the skate park would be in Hattaway.
Mm-hmm.
Down near to the bottom, below the stone house next to the basketball court. I showed you the pictures of the existing and the shoot. My whole plan was just to replace that hard surface with something adequate that we could put a skate park on and build above that with ramps and rail, uh, and use a design build firm that have that for us. Um, we've now been instructed by controllers that we are not allowed to use design build applications in the municipality. Uh, I now have to go out and bid for its design team, and I will work with the public history committee, and we want something here, a skate park, and then evolve to the destruction. That's the second process. So it's gonna draw it out a little bit longer, but it is a process that has to be used. Uh, you'll see, I did a sign map up two years ago showing how the space would be utilized on that yellow picture. Uh, and then I've been in conversation uh, with two of those design build type firms that are interested in bidding for the design application, and he showed you two of their thought processes as to what could end up being then that Hattaway Park.
Is Swan Ranch a real?
What's that?
Is Swan Ranch a real um, design firm?
Yes.
Are they at?
Swan Ranch, very California. I don't know where Swan Ranch is.
You know what Swan Ranch is?
I do know.
Spell the same, what? No, I think it's. Fascinating spot.
So, so I just wanted to introduce the project a little bit further, seeing how you are intending on being. Uh, I again copied the resolution and short environmental assessment form. And in doing this process this week, I came across my last document, which was a letter from back in January this year, that went to the New York State Parks and Rec from their Historic Preservation Office, already claiming that the project would have no uh, adverse effect on the properties, uh, archeologically, whatever. So we're already one step ahead of the.
Oh, yes.
So I look forward to writing my next communication and see you again.
So there's no action to do. You don't want to do anything other than take this home and look at it. I think Michael has a question.
Um, so we'll be redoing the parking lot, too?
The parking lot has already been done, now paved and lined. Absolutely not a project that I don't miss.
Shows how often I do it as a project.
Um, I just want to say thank you for the color copies, because a lot of times we'll get black and white as far as to see. Thank you.
The start, the start thing you mentioned, the form. Has to do with the building that's already been built.
Yes, okay, right. It, 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 it's adjacent to archeologically interested private sites, but they already looked at it and have said that there's no.
Yeah, I thought I was.
Yes, all. Very good, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your patience waiting for everything else.
Have a great evening.
Thank you. Moving on, we are going to uh, item number six, the rezoning of Schwank Drive. Uh, this was a request from Mayor Noble's office. Um, we sent out one of referrals to the different um, boards and held a public hearing. Hi, Mayor Noble.
Hi, Jan.
So do you want to?
Yeah, so just to summarize, um, after we sent out, um, the Bartek did all the lift, heavy lifting here, um, once he uh, sent out uh, the communication um, of the proposal to the different uh, planning boards, both the county planning board and the city planning board, he also shared it with the zoning working group um, as suggested. And in the end, uh, the common response that we received was the uh, the interest to actually add a couple of additional parcels, um, along Schwank Drive, uh, to be able to kind of fill out uh, the corridor with the same type of zoning. And so we thought that that was a good idea. We are not opposed to the county or the zoning working group's recommendation. And so what the resolution tonight um, would be to actually, you know, kind of just continue to move this process forward, um, however, but with the amended um, you know, change with adding those couple of parcels. And I believe Bartek provided a committee report and a sample resolution, um, that would kind of hit this to the next step.
Yeah. Has everyone had a chance? All right, I, I mean, I agree with those recommendations that they all, it makes sense that everything be included, so.
I think so, too, to me, the whole thing was.
Yes, Matt?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, I think that this is gonna be a really great and important change to Schwank Drive, but in terms of uh, sort of the process, are, this is more of a general question, but are property owners informed of when the zoning and their parcel changes?
Yes, um, so there is a process um, of notifying parcels as a part of this process. I think that that process has already started, Bartek would know for sure, but we have to send, I believe, certified mail to um, any property owner that is adjacent or um, you know, and that's when I think that they're invited to come to the public hearing, I believe, if, if I've got my um, details correct, and so that's so everyone is then made aware early on in the process.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
And I think there was only one person who testified at our hearing, and that was one of the property owners who was asking for this.
Yes. Yeah, and he wasn't, they weren't aware that the, the county had already recommended it, so, yeah. So it's all good, okay. All right, so I'm gonna read the resolution, uh, local law of the Common Council, the City of Kingston, New York, amending the regulating map of the City of Kingston's form-based code. Can I get a motion? Sarah, I'm gonna get Sarah this one, but I'm running Scott's phones, okay. Um, any discussion? All right, all right, and call for a vote, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Great.
All right, thank you all very much. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
All right, moving on, and now we are getting uh, to number seven, uh, Zid Charter Reform. All right, moving on, now we are getting, uh, to number seven, uh, the Charter Reform Commission. Um, so this is some conversations that have been happening so far and council member Randy Scott Children had brought this forward last year. And so we're bringing it back and giving an update to everyone. So looking to take steps to move forward. Uh, this is something that's been a very long time, um, that we haven't had any charter review or charter changes. And so um, time for a robust discussion and then maybe how we're going to move forward. Sarah, uh, on her last day, she's been doing a lot of research.
Some research, yes.
So do you want to start off?
Yes, so I sat around, I, um, after we followed up as I promised in the last time we had our, our small meeting. And I reached out to Nedhoff. To give a suggestion, you know, because they, I mean, they advised the charters, and this is the New York City Council on Mayors. And so I spoke with a man named Wade Beltramo there. And, um, you know, had a, had a yeah, in fact, the conversation I had with him, as well as the conversation I had also with something called the National Civic League. Both of them provided some new input that was separate from what we had discussed.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, in our, um, meeting, we were talking about the need to set up a charter review commission, how that would be, um, posed. Probably moving forward from that, and then also needing the money, you know, what kind of resources would be needed? So I reached out to find out what kind of resources would we need? Um, and Mr. Beltramo was saying that there could be, you know, what you decide to do depends on how big or small the changes are going to be. Are you going to make amendments? Are you going to revise the whole thing? Do you revise the whole thing? It's a very focused process. You know, and so that goes on for much longer. That's sort of what we were thinking, like a three and a half process. Um, and his advice was, you know, you might want to think, whether you might want to think about just having an advisory committee be set up by the council that could just look at really what needs to be, you know, work with you to figure out just what needs to be revised. And maybe it doesn't need to be the whole thing. And that had also, you know, been something that we had talked about, that maybe you don't need to revise the whole thing, just certain sections. And so this gentleman suggested that we, um, have a scoping committee. There would be advisory and then you could decide to go ahead and do a charter revision. Or what he said also was that not all changes to the charter have to involve a referendum. Right?
Right.
Just being meant to the charter if, if it's something that is not redoing or structure of the government. So he suggested that, he said, if you don't have a lot of money, you know, that might be a good way to start. And you could do that very rapidly. You're just having a group that's put together that isn't necessarily looking at the whole thing. And so this would be, um, you know, something that we could do that would be less uh, time consuming and money consuming. And so basically the questions yeah, that he asked is what resources do we actually have to spend on this? You know, it's really sort of about how much time and money do we really want to spend on this? And do we feel the charter needs to be completely redone? And then, um, he said some of the other things, that this is just an advisory committee. And it's not, you know, advisor without any formal decision making process. Just some people were assigning to the line, you know, look at the charter. And we, and possibly we could, some of us could be on it too. He said this would need to be checked with an attorney, sort of see what. So I'm bringing that up. I'm in.
Long as you don't have a committee, it's not a problem having some of you guys on.
So that could be the advisory committee. Yep. And so we could start that. Or he said, you can just, if you decided already that you want to look at the charter and redo the whole charter and the whole structure of the former government, you could also have your commission do some scoping. So you could do both. You could do scoping and I set up the commission, you could set up petition. And we have been talking about already what the commission might look like. Then, um, I also had a very interesting discussion with the folks at, um, the folks of the National Civic League. And they're an organization that is very involved in undertaking community civic engagements within communities. And they have been working on charter reform in a number of communities across across the country. They're also working with, I'm running New York and a few others they're working on. But he had a very interesting suggestion, which had never really occurred to me, but I thought it was worth bringing up here. They said they've been working in Decatur, Georgia, which is redoing its charter. And they decided that they would use this new method of selecting the panel for the Charter Review Commission. And he said they used, um, a new, uh, website called Panalot. And it's been set up, very interesting. Um, I sort of gave some information in my notes, but basically I'll, I'll just read to you because there are people here who might want to hear this too. Panalot is a panel selection by lot. It's a not-for-profit system for randomly selecting citizens' panels in a way that is representative of the population and fair to volunteers. The goal is to facilitate the selection of panels that bring together randomly selected people from all walks of life to discuss key questions and deliver policy recommendations. The panels should be representative of the population in terms of features like gender, age, ethnicity, education, and more. And they aim to select a panel in a way that gives volunteers a chance to participate. So basically, he said, what they did in Decatur, Georgia, and I've asked them for more information about this. He said they ended up sending out, um, seven thousand postcards. You know, this, and he showed me a postcard, um, when we were talking on Zoom. And it's very inviting postcard that says, you know, would you, would you like to get involved in helping to, you know, take a look at our city's government? They got a hundred and thirty people respond. And there was a survey that they had to fill out. I've also asked him for a copy of the survey. And it addressed some of the things that we've talked about in terms of representation. So somebody who's responding to the survey would have to say, well, you know, age, gender, race, ethnicity, they asked her sort of demographic questions, where do they live within the region? What's their level of education? Why, you know, why are they going? The same kinds of questions sometimes that we ask when we're putting out applications for people to participate on the commission, so that we're getting a broad representation. So they got a hundred and thirty people responding and then they used, um, and then these are people who responded to the questions. Then there's, there's something called random.org that goes in and processes these and sort of creates a list of people, you know, and it sort of creates a list of people who meet that criteria. And you can tell them, you know, how many people you're looking for. You know, it's a fifteen, eighteen, twenty, they had a hundred and thirty. In the end, they were looking, uh, for a group of fifteen to twenty. And so it was randomly generated and then sort of reviewed to make sure that all the bases were covered. But he said, it was really amazing. They, they were really surprised by the, the quality of the people who responded. You know, he said normally when a council or a mayor, any kind of city government gets together and they're putting people on panels, they're putting people on panels who they know. You know, already, whether it's, you know, because, and you look for people who are similar to what you think. I mean, all of us are not going to go you know, and we already don't necessarily agree on what, you know, the city's government should look like. So we would pick certain people. He said this gets rid of that altogether. And he said the kind of people who responded were not people who we might have, or the community might ordinarily. They were people who self-identify as being interested, um, qualified. He said it was a really great group that was very representative in terms of gender, race, interest group, experience, background. So they were really thrilled with how it turned out. And he said it felt very fair. So I've asked him for more information, you know, about that, but it sort of seemed like uh, a very interesting option. And this is random, he said they never used it before. This is the first time they ever tried it. And they were really happy with, with the turnout in that community.
Was the seven thousand the number of households in Decatur?
It's a smaller community.
Okay. So like, yeah, we have like eleven.
Yeah, we would have.
We have eleven.
So, yeah, so it would be, you know, that's expensive mailing. But you wouldn't even have to do a mailing. You could also just, he said they also got word out by reaching out to local nonprofits and sort of standing with. Then we would get these out via websites and emails and other things.
Did they mention the cost of what?
That's my, that was one of the questions that I, that was one of the questions that I asked them. Like what was, what was the cost? Um, I do know that there, yeah, so anyway, there, there are questions to be followed up, but I thought that it was an interesting.
Yeah, this is, so we were talking about before, the citizen.
It's, yeah, he said it's very similar to. It's an auto, it's an automated citizens assembly. Yeah, it's basically how he described it.
Do they finish their process? I think of them. Those citizen assemblies in a lot of other venues, uh, have been successful.
Yeah.
So example, one of the classic examples is in Ireland. Um, when they were updating the issue of abortion, whether or not to legalize it, they used a citizen assembly. And they, they gathered about a hundred citizens from all over the country. And they're the ones who all gathered the law that was in progress.
Now, I mean, the commission is now needed. And apparently I went onto their website and it looks like they're going to be done at the end of the summer before they bring it to the population. So, uh, anyway. That's very interesting. So I guess my question is what are the, what are the next steps that we want to take? If we were going to, do we want to? You know, budget is going to be a factor. Um, you know, do you want to do a more, more robust sort of charter review and look at everything? Or is it worth putting together a scoping committee? To consider a big or small agency to be.
Mine.
I don't think much actually needs to be budgeted. When the, the county reviewed, they had a charter revision commission. Um, as required through the charter, to review the charter, every ten years, I think. And that was done, you know, the legislature and the executive appointed their members and it was staffed in-house by, through the county attorney's office. So there wasn't any costs incurred. So I think this can be done without cost to the county.
Well, it's.
Cities.
City, yeah. And, and so we know that our, uh, general counsel is extremely busy. And we, and I just don't see us having the capacity to do it without.
That's, that's one of those we've been talking about, just speaking about, yeah. Yes.
So two things to keep in mind. One is there's a time limit. So we have to pay attention to if you're not aware. Uh, it has to have to within two years from an election. And so what we're, the reason we're meeting now is because we'd like to have everything in a quarter. So what did we decide to do so that we could run running the day after the upcoming November election? So that we would have, uh, plenty of time if there was a need to have, uh, a public, um, vote on.
Right.
We'd be ready, yeah, when the time came. The other thing that is, I think, important to keep in mind is that the current, um, charter that we have was adopted under, um, shall we say, uh, um.
Less than ideal, perhaps.
Less than ideal circumstances. And it was not really a process that was, as we're today transparent. And so, uh, I mean, we, you know, I'm just letting folks know that there's some things that, that I think set this on that are very important for us to take into account. So it's not just like, you know, feeling like we just want to review what's there. I think it needs to have a really sound examination to make sure that it is doing what, what we wanted to do and what the, the people in large will benefit from.
Yeah, I feel, um, I love, I feel less comfortable with doing a committee at this time. That would do a scoping and I prefer.
In the commission.
Yeah.
So you have a commission model for us.
Oh, cities are good.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
So right. You, you, you are not running again, but would you be willing to sit on this committee as it goes? Something?
I'm willing to be involved, yeah.
But.
But I mean, you wouldn't with the panel, panel, crowd.
I know.
Panel away, you know, that you, you have to trust in that process.
But that's just to, to, okay. Yeah, so in other words, if you're, if you're impaling an entire commission, then people aren't disappointed. You know, people are applying, they're being run through this random generator based on their qualifications. And what we're looking for, we, and the community set out, they wanted women, you know, they described what they wanted the outcome to be. So many percentage of women and whatever. And then that's what the random generator can take the answers and spit out the, the results. So they automate it, they should set the citizens sentiment.
Um, so I'm in favor of the commission. I think all of us have expressed desire that there are changes that need to be made in the charter.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think that government by sortition is the right way to do it. I mean, even through the, of the seven thousand households of one hundred thirty-one respondents, that is a point oh one response rate.
The early, because citizen assemblies, you get about between three and five percent response. And then you choose from within that. So you know, also like Sarah was saying, you can also, um, ask people to, you know, you could.
You can fight. I know, but it's just like, to me, it seems like we're going through this whole rigmarole to make it seem random. But at the end of the day, like the same with people apply to all of them.
No.
Then you're out of the line.
No, I mean.
On responding, like we feel the same responses every time, no matter which way we do.
He said that thing, he said they, that.
That's not the.
That just feels, to me, it feels like we're, we were elected to make these decisions. I feel like we're abdicating authority to.
All right.
Panel.
See, I would say exactly, it's the same way. I would say that what we're doing is we're empowering citizens at large to be very involved in establishing, uh, what they believe is the best form of government for the city. And the, there's a long history now of citizen assemblies of choosing people this way. And of, of a lot of success in how they do it and what they believe. Uh, Bard has, uh, I can put you in touch with that if anybody's interested. They actually, um, have run seminars on citizen assemblies, I've been to two of them. And, um, Phil Lindsay over there is one of the people who's really been working with a lot of different organizations that do this. And, um, but another crucial thing within that process is that, um, and some people I have, I'm always fascinated, there seems to be a kind of knee-jerk reaction against this, this approach to things. Because a lot of times we have this experience of, you know, these people are still like, oh, they're naysayers and no, no, no. And then all of a sudden, everybody's like, you know, separate corners. But a crucial part of, of this has to do with working, uh, with the folks who were involved so that they establish first off what their values are. So they're able to actually hear where people are. So before you start looking at solutions, if you just have them say, here's the problem, find a solution. Then that's generally what will happen is they'll get very territorial and very difficult. But the reason why these are, uh, usually successful, or why there's been a lot of success in citizen assemblies is a crucial aspect in working with folks for a session or two to get them aware of where everybody is so that they have a way of connecting with each other.
It's a couple of things. One is I kind of have a tendency to agree with Michael. The people who are going to do this are going to be people who care. So you're going to get, okay, so that's, that's a subset of our thousand households. You're going to need facilitation. You can't, you're going to need a lawyer. Cause our lawyers got way too much to do.
Yes.
So it's going to cost us money.
Right.
So, you know, one thing is you need a budget, first of all.
Yep.
And then you're going to think about, you know, are you going to get? You know, who's going to, who's going to be interested? Is a concern of mine. Is it going to be, is it going to be?
Same people.
Right. Or is it going to go, or have an accident? Is it going to be, you know, who's going to be the, who's going to be the thought?
That's why I would suggest that you look into citizen assemblies because the process, because it's random, it does exactly the opposite of what they're worried about.
Well, I'm going to submit an application. So that right there, I'm, I'm someone who cares. I'm not going to submit on the hate.
Yep.
So that narrows your.
But the, the crucial thing here is that there are a lot of people who care, but they haven't actually taken the step to. And what they need, so I have this experience as a professor. I have thirty students in my classroom. I can guarantee seven of them will talk every class when I ask questions. Uh, and the other twenty-three will sit there. Further guaranteed that if I ask at least fifteen of them a question, they will answer really quickly. Those are the people that we're looking for. We've got the seven, we know who the seven are in Kingston. They are always here. They show up for things, we very much appreciate what they do. It's another fifteen that I think for this would be crucial for us to engage.
So I'm confused, how do you engage those other fifteen?
You send them the postcards out. You're, you're, that's an, you're asking them the question.
Okay.
Saying, hey, we see you, you know, and if you're interested, let us know and then we'll see if the randomization pulls your name up.
And, and right, and I can send you a copy of the postcard, it was very inviting. They showed me, you know, it's like, if you got that, you know, you might be interested. And I have to say, just during this campaign season, when I was out there and I was talking to people, I was meeting people who I did not know, right? Cause they're always new people, by me. And I met some people who said to me, I'd really like to be in, you know, I'd really be interested in getting involved in government. Like they didn't even know how, how to do it necessarily. And I said, oh, the committees, you know, there, here's, here's some ways you can get involved. You know, most people love to show up at meetings. Who wants to go to meetings, right? You know, but, but these were people who were saying, I could be interested, you know, in going to some meeting. So I, I tracked who they were and, you know, had reached out to them and, you know, and then, and then in touch with the application process for committees. But there were people who otherwise, just because I happened to be there, or if they had gotten the postcard, they're not the usual suspects of people getting gave. If the people who were thinking, maybe I could, you know, so I was really, I was really inspired by that. So I think there are people out there.
Mm-hmm.
Who.
Was so that mailing the post money as well.
That's what I'm going to find out. It was, it wasn't a huge postcard. It was, you know, it was just small, it was just for them. Now, right, just the postcard stamp. But, but yeah, it depends on how many you send out and there might be other ways to do it. You know, to through like, yeah, I don't know. But it was very, it was very attractive. It didn't look like any other things we've got. Maybe we could get someone to cover the costs of that, maybe. Maybe there might be.
Saharaish Foundation.
Some. But I'll ask, but I will certainly, yeah, that's one of the questions is, who did they pay for it? Who supported it, was there a budget from the city? So the budget questions are ones that I want to follow up on.
Right. So, so I, I kind of want to go back to the timeline, just so that.
That's right, because we have a time, we had a timeline set up. By the year.
I want the AC.
No, the terms, it was because the ACs are not.
Right.
That's why I need to send them a term of. Subcolors, would you pay for AC? Would you want your tech dollars in the air conditioning after hours when you're here except council members? I'm looking for, I'm looking for a timeline, I never had it somewhere.
Well, we couldn't have a reservation.
Yeah.
I don't. No, we have. Oh, here we said, okay, we said July, discussion of laws and rules leading to the establishment of a commission this is leading to. So basically August, common council approval for a charter review commission to be established. So it's not necessarily say, yeah, so the question is, do we really, this is another legal question. Do we need to have the method of its establishment part of the resolution? Do we already need to know that? Or can we simply say in the, in the committee report that we agreed to establish a commission? And then proceed to develop a questionnaire and create how the members will be.
You will.
Surprise.
Oh, well, so are you establishing the commission or are you guys moving forward, trying to take steps? And then you're going to pass the resolution establishment?
We need, we need to establish the commission. We need to at least say how many people we want to have on it in the end. I don't think we have to establish the method of choosing, if I remember correctly, which one of those folks. But we need to say, what's the number of people? Yes.
Oh. Oh, I think what we, I'm going back to my notes. Um, what we said is that we needed to, I think, decide whether they're going to be appointed rather than elected.
Right.
And so we could say that members will be appointed in the process, which is to be, which will be determined. And then the manner of election. Applications will be created, applicant, you know, applicants solicited, you know, something very general. I don't think we need to go into detail about. The, we could say about the method at this point.
The, the one, the, the, we sent out this email from NICOM, right? Um, chapter seven charter revision. And it does say the local law fix or provide a method for determining the number of members of the commission and whether the members will be appointed, elected or both. And prescribe the manner of appointing or electing commission members. If the commission members are to be elected, the local law must also establish whether the members are to be elected at large or by districts. If the local law provides for elected charter commission members, they must be elected at the same election at which the above question is submitted then on the ballot. So. So we will need to know more.
We need to know more, but do we need to know this tonight?
No, we have to come ready by next month.
By next, by next month, which is two weeks from now.
Figure out.
All right. So would people be interested in having a special laws and rules meeting to work on this? I'd like to call that.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that to just finalize our method, because now we have more information.
Just don't schedule it for August 12th.
Or the sixth through the 11th.
This is something we want to.
This is July, we have to do it in July.
But in the next few weeks.
We have, uh, meet before the August, I can't do pure. Let's be intimate. Uh, that's already the timeline we had set up.
Right. You're not around August.
Yeah.
So, all right, we're just, I.
So we were saying September, September would be the first reading of the local law, October the second reading. Then November will begin the selection process. So we put it, you know, so we've got some time.
But we're not putting it on ballot. We don't have to pass the local law this time.
No.
Okay.
In September, you're saying.
I mean, we have some local law, I mean, I'm sorry, putting it on the referendum. We have to put it on.
No, there's no referendum. We're just establishing a commission.
I think we're supposed to both.
No, because the referendum wouldn't happen for another couple of years. This is really.
Is your question, Michelle, is it a local law or is it an ordinance?
No, no, I know that we have to pass the local law, but I think then we also, I thought had to establish it, put it on the ballot.
No.
Okay. I know we do at the end.
At the end.
Yeah.
There, there are three ways of establishing a commission, why does.
Right.
So we decided to do the option of their council establishing.
Okay. So we wanted to do then the two years, so it lines up then with the next election, yes.
So, you know, technically then we would have to have the second reading, the latest would be November's meeting.
Right.
Right. So November, so that means that the first reading would then be September one. So, but we also, we're talking about trying to be a month in advance.
So September.
Well, right, that's what we were saying, September would be the first reading of the local law. So then in August, we would, we had said we would want common council approval for the charter, charter revision. Wait, for the, for the commission to be established. And then the local law would be read in September.
Can you, um, can you both look at this document?
Oh.
Please, it says forming a charter commission, charter commission established by legislative body. Um, it, it talks about it's still having a go on the ballot.
On the ballot.
Yeah.
I'm looking for lawyers or what state lawyer, looking at.
NICOM, it's, yeah. It's a whole home rule.
Whatever this bill.
Yeah, I mean, eventually it has to be, because we have nothing to go on with it.
Right. I just, can you please read it? That's what I'm asking.
So, right.
But I just, Michelle's question is, does there need to be a ballot question? This year is saying, shall there be a charter?
Yeah, that's what I was, no, it does. This is what I'm asking you to read, what you sent us says that.
Let me go in and look at this.
It's a warrant.
Oh, okay. All right. Sure. Okay.
One.
Okay. It depends which option you choose, right? I think we just, yeah, I think. That would be the citizen reference, that would be the citizen referendum method. So this is really the council creating a law that says we're going to establish a commission. And then the result of that will.
Okay.
Yeah.
But for, so we're doing this in this timeline to have a product in the 2027 election for the public to vote on.
Don't you think there is a need?
If there's a need for them.
If there is a need for it, but in 2027, what is the deadline to have a ballot question?
I think we said August.
It's August?
We said August, we're gonna be, yeah. So basically this commission, if it were to be, would have from January or February 2026, whenever it got together, to work all the way through 2026. And then to 2027, and that's 18 month period seems to be.
So the, so the commission will ideally finish its work by July, 2027.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we also thought it was important that the process of choosing the commission be done prior to, like, before seats turn over. And then we have new people coming in and, you know, people that have already been here working, working back on with the charter. With, I mean, more of, have a better understanding of what this is about, you know, and helping, um, put this commission together.
So will this commission ideally actually meet before the end of 2025?
We didn't say that, we said 2026.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no, the holidays come in and, you know, so it could be, it could be constituted, but then they would meet suddenly in 2026. And it would be a lot of work for them, but it would be interesting work, I would think, for people who.
It's a huge commitment.
It's a huge commitment.
Well, the other thing is, it's, uh, it is huge commitment, but it's time limited.
Mm-hmm.
Just a minute of time. And another thing to think about is possibility of paying people a small stipend for doing it. Or at least.
That's part of the budget.
There are any expenses that might come up. Those might be, childcare is an important one to consider. You know, so those, you're right, so those are very important things to think about so that we mitigate, rather so that we ensure that good people are on the committee.
Right. And that's one of the things they said when I was speaking to both NICOM and the civic league. They said that covering un-pocketed expenses. You know, like those people didn't get stipends, but they got un-pocketed expenses covered. So that would be something.
To think about.
So that's part of the budget then.
All right. So.
I'll ask.
Picking another date. Monday, the 21st of July.
Cause three of us will not be, will be gone in different parts. And in August, the idea is to sort of get things going. Well, I can use this one. Perhaps my local secretary. What? Maybe he has something more fun to do.
Uh, are we talking about this being official laws in most meetings?
No, special. Well, yeah, it's, it's still official, yeah. Would you have time to fall for it?
Yes, we, so enough days.
Oh, the total.
So today is Wednesday.
Generally, we'd want five business days, but certain circumstances, you know, you guys are under a short, um, time schedule. Uh, the one thing about the 21st is that it's the same day as the planning board meetings, you guys would not be meeting here.
Yeah, I usually go to the planning meeting, but I don't think it's a heavy agenda this, this month.
Uh, is there much do you know, Bob, on the, on the public safety agenda on the 23rd?
Public safety is more than I would like, but, uh, I'm trying to think of what's on it.
Yeah, the one thing that we.
Well, yeah, I was just thinking. Yeah.
Well, I was just thinking, would I.
Take it back.
Hard to be here and so.
Oh, right.
It might be.
Good. I mean, I, I can do it myself. Monday, Tuesday, everybody's.
Yeah, Tuesday, I have a bunch.
Yeah, we have the.
Yeah.
But we can do it before the public safety meeting.
I would take that.
Maybe you can.
My name's. I, well, I have to be here for the.
Oh.
I'm doing like, see if I use now.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't, I'm, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to ask, I was going to ask, ready the chair of the public safety meeting for me, I will be here. But could you zoom, they have to be here, we're not going to pass anything. This is going to be, what's this going to be, describe this.
Well, they have to pull together in a resolution.
Right.
Ask the resolution now.
We have to come up with a resolution that would be voted on in August to create, to constitute, yeah. Local law.
Yeah.
Maybe if we pass the, if it passes the committee meeting in August, then it goes first reading in September, second reading in October. So I think this would not, we wouldn't have to vote on it.
I don't know.
Sort of.
You could go in August.
So you can zoom in.
But can you zoom in if you're on vacation?
No.
No, if you're on vacation, that's not allowed.
I'm a starter.
It's not, you're, you're allowed to discuss, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, even if there is a vote, there would be a vote, but.
There would be loaded this meeting, talking about having a special meeting to set up.
Oh, set up and, right.
So that we can.
In August.
At the August, August rules meeting.
Got it.
And September is the first reading, October is the second reading, and November is last.
Okay. So we're talking about a meeting where we both, you know, just getting together to take, figure out what the next.
So before public safety, but you will not be here.
Right. So I can zoom in.
He want to be here.
Zoom in.
Okay.
Right.
Right.
Okay. So do we want to do five or 5:30?
I'd say about.
I would say five.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
And meanwhile, any information I find, I will forward to everybody. I forward it, should I forward it to other alder?
I would send it to everybody.
From now on, I give this to everybody. Just be Kate. Yes.
This summer.
I'll send you everything, I'll even send you all the things that, yes, previous notes and other things. But I have to say, the more research I do, the more interesting it becomes. I mean, it's a really great thing and I think people, I hope some citizens, here we have some citizens here. I hope you're going to be excited to spread the word and just be.
It's a way of beginning the celebration of 250 generous throughout the country.
Is that right?
Your establishment.
We're creating some.
What, are you familiar with the Beagons charter?
Oh, yeah.
We actually interviewed that.
I'm sorry?
We interviewed the people.
The people who were involved in that came and they spoke about the, about the two different, right, about how they put forward one and it failed and then they tried the second time. And then also, the national civic league, you can look this up, they have a model city charter.
Yes.
And, yeah, they have done that, they just revised it a couple of years ago. So I'll send, yeah, I'll send that out and you go in and sign up and then you can get a copy of it. And here it is, it looks. Yeah. So basically, um, I'll have to ask them, I think you have to be a member in order to get full charter.
That's a long time.
This is a hard copy that explains it. And then there's the table of contents. Yeah, the table of contents that has all the components, the powers of the city, city cap, blah, blah. And they tend to go for a city manager model.
Yeah.
But they also understand that there are communities that have, you know, mayor council models. And so they have an appendix for that. They tend to, you know, they tend to.
The more the more.
Remind that because.
Despite what the numbers say.
Yes, right. But it doesn't.
I'm going to say most of this.
Most of the cities in New York State are mayors. So it just depends on what your community wants.
Right.
Right.
I mean, they're lobbying for a model that they like.
Yeah, well, they're, they're, well, they're lobbying, they're lobbying, you know, like. You don't, but.
I've had more experience, I've had more experience, bad experiences. And this is the advantage of them than with the strong mayors.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And this is where Robert and I tend to disagree, but that's okay.
Right. Same advantage, my experience is the city manager freely just trying to survive. And they make, they make an alliance with people on the board, text them. So they don't have the vision, they don't have the, they're not as foresighted as, and the majority of the cities in New York are strong mayors.
And how's that working out?
Well.
Our sister Hudson Valley cities are all weak mayors. We're, you know.
What's wrong with your position then?
I was going to.
And we are a much stronger.
And we are in a much stronger position than all of the bottom.
Well, and I will tell you, what we learned from Beacon was that they went, they originally were going to do a council. Then they were going to do a city manager, but it was rejected. So they came back with a city administrator because the city administrator reports to the mayor. So basically. The city administrator understands all of the executive functions. There's there's a CEO, but they have to report to the person who has. The vision. And that has worked much better than the coast than having somebody report to.
Right.
Like a variety of people.
And when you did that in Beacon, you had a great mayor. She was great.
Well, then so then that's what's in the.
And they've all been great since since uh in my opinion, but then bear in mind that the but you mean. Mayor. Their salary is greatly diminished.
They make it twenty five thousand dollars.
And so who I'm sorry, exactly.
Well, they're part time. You get.
Yeah. This is getting into.
This is the.
This is the conversation. The charter review. Right. Mission is going to have, and they basically will interview. Yeah, they'll interview different communities, see how it works, what they like, what they don't like. You know, but um there are upsides and downsides to every single form of government. It all depends on who the people are, right?
New York's a catch.
Uh, Kwame, are you there?
But but it's exciting. I'll send you those to the models too.
Kwame.
City charter too.
Kwame.
Hello.
Hey. Um, so we're um calling for a special laws and rules meeting uh for. Wednesday, July twenty third at five P M.
Okay.
Um, to uh work on the um charter commission uh local law.
All right, noted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So notices need to go out.
Over.
Thank you.
Look.
Local law. All right. All right. So moving on, uh item number eight, which is the burn ban. I just forwarded everybody the letter that was um. Sent to.
Send us the letter.
Yeah, Lorraine Marina who spoke earlier went home and sent the letter forward, so.
Listen, barbecue.
I was going to answer, and well, nothing to be on front.
Justice. Well, this is.
Yeah.
Right. So.
I was trying to find the burn ban that we already do.
Because we must have it now.
Yeah. So when I brought this up before, it was a merit, like also thinking like we didn't have a burn ban at the time a few years ago. He's like, no, we have a burn ban in place. Three hundred and sixty five days a year, but do you know exactly where it is? I haven't been able to find it now.
That I know you mentioned it. Was it something that was?
Okay.
Um. Kind of fine as an ordinance within our code or something that was just as. Like I.
Let's see where it's. Okay, here it is.
There are. Fire regulations pertaining to buildings, there's stuff pertaining to burning uh.
It's a harsh. Can you see that?
Nothing.
Like, yeah. Here's the. See. Yeah, yes.
That would be a good follow up to the next uh horrible business about digitizing and making it so that we can easily find.
Yes.
Other things like that.
It's true. This contained cooking fires is a problem.
Yes.
Mm hmm. Uh, I also like. I I think there's. Advantage of this ban. The the situation at the beginning is very different. Yeah, here.
Oh, yeah. So basically, what this would ban is backyard fire pits containing campfires less than three feet in height or being light. Contained cooking fires. That's right. Or we don't have to have that.
What does that mean?
What does that mean?
Is that a grill with like?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it's that gas grill. I don't know.
Yeah. Gas grill or charcoal grill where the where the cooking is within is contained within the unit.
And then.
It seems safer.
What part of the year are we talking about? About three hundred and sixty five days or just during like the summer?
Ice press.
So it doesn't affect fire places, right?
No, it's it's outdoor.
And who sets the fire risk? Do the governors or the mayor or do you?
Well, I mean, there's, you know, like, there's.
Regardless of the state current ban is in effect, it's in effect everywhere in the state.
Right.
Uh, so it'd be separate from that, uh. You know. Mayor have to, just like with the snow emergencies. And uh and I would imagine it would be, you know, only the local enforcement. It's not like uh T C covenant enforcement was the current ban, right?
So it looks like they're asking for a a more um.
More extreme.
More extreme than the state.
Now, Lorraine said that other communities had passed these kinds of ordinances, so we have examples of what other communities have done.
Uh, well, she just mentioned, yeah, I don't have them, so.
But maybe she.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me see.
How do you?
Yeah, so I'm not understanding prohibiting all outdoor burning, including backfire containing campfires and small cooking fires. Is that to say that I can't use my grill?
That's what we're.
That grass um.
I could see this if it were um. Your grill had to be like ten feet away from any, you know, any uh other object, any any fencing or any railing um. But to ban small cooking fires um in total, it just makes no sense to me.
I'm really.
And we don't have to say small cooking fire. Michael, Michael has.
Um, so I'm concerned about enforcement. Um, I don't know. I would assume it's the you would call the non emergency number for the fire department and say that my neighbor is. Having a party.
Right, right.
Uh, but then can you go and tell them to put it out? It just seems like. Maybe some neighborhoods will get enforced, some others won't. Um, we have some businesses geared that do cook outside or or have.
Right.
Um, you know, I believe open brickyards has fire pits. Um.
Hmm.
You know, I'm not familiar with our fire risk town. I would assume that that exists um somewhere in the state um. You know, maybe certain parts of the city are are high on this, then say, you know, down by the Kingston Point. Um, so I'm not sure if it's.
Yeah, so.
Thing that is needs to necessarily be citywide.
So I did.
Again, to me, that's the.
Alright.
We're making this part of the city, not the rest.
No, you don't want to do. Right. And of course, this is about air quality in addition to just screenshot, right? That's what this group is. And I can testify that when my neighbors have fires outside, I have to shut all my windows.
Mm hmm.
Because the air quality is so bad. Um, I mean, I'm willing to do it. They're having a barbecue. I'm not going to stop them from from doing it, but I think they're talking not only about fire risk, but also about air quality. That's how she started.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think um. Well, I'll I'll speak with her, find out um what other communities that she's representing in.
Yeah.
Before you bring it back, you might also want to ask for info from the chief of the.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. Yeah, definitely. The only thing I can find about open fires pertains to West Strand Park. So notwithstanding any law, there shall be no open fire cooking fire in West Strand Park except by permit granted by the fire department.
But what was your?
I speaking from experience of the village of Pauls also bans.
Although we're about to.
I have.
That was because of detached mall.
Well, then you can share the experience of how much you had to pay and the fines and all that, yeah.
It was just. Third. Which again is the enforcement.
But yeah, it's obvious. But don't doesn't the city have cooking pits, like barbecue pits, stool at certain blocks?
We do.
So how can we then? Pay? And we do have an air pollution law too. Prohibition of emission of dense smoke substances. I just think we need to put a perimeter around it, like.
I I'm not familiar with our our A Q I monitoring. I know that the next report was just released, but I would have to think.
I think that's right.
That's a three way is a much bigger detriment to. Um, Kingston's air quality than. Somebody you can help dog.
All right. So I'm gonna.
We have information to give.
Yeah, we're gonna put this on for old business. I will speak to the fire chief as family as well. And speak with Lorraine, she does live in a ward, and follow up on what reports, you know, what other um of the laws that she.
Can you make us be what somebody happens to be burning? I mean, I know that when I was in Beacon, there was somebody who was like. Burning construction materials in his backyard, and he felt that that was okay, you know, and so and it was not okay. And so we had to create, yeah, so basically, but also I think. Um, D E C was actually able to be called in because I think there are state regulations about burning hazardous materials. You know, so the question is.
Yeah, they're off.
So, yeah, so this guy actually was, now he he received a lot of uh. Yes, people came to this issue. And he didn't do burning anymore, but you know, it's. Yeah. It's good to see.
All right. And as Matt said, we're moving on to uh old business legislative procedures.
Hmm.
Oh, bye.
Take you.
Bye. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Um.
Trying to pick away there is some sort.
I don't think the sign during.
Resolution that was passed pertaining to burning within the city, I can't find it. Um, I don't know if someone else can, but that's just another.
Yeah.
Example of. Um, not having digitally organized resolutions other than that can be easily, you know, penal. Where a lot of other places, you know, you can search, you know, word searches in their website, and then all the resolutions that were passed for ten years pertaining to that subject will be sold up. Um, as I said previously, there are grants available. Uh, to include the digitalization of records. I would recommend that we can get that, but uh. As far previously advised, you know, I think it's not just. You know, looking for money, but it's also really start trying to uh virtual into. That organization of our record structures.
You're my first really bad about.
Requesting grants or.
I mean, it sounds like a project. It sounds like telling you to spend money on it.
Yes, I think so. We definitely have to spend money on it, but I think it would be well worth it.
But we were speaking about having a clerk too, and I just. Have a clerk. Well, like we need a clerk, right? Like. So I feel like the clerk should like start the process too.
Well, you can tell me about that. Iron mountain. That's.
Yes.
Iron mountain, take all your records and do stuff. Not for free.
No, of course not.
Right, they get digitized, but we need a like a um.
Somebody.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. A system, systemizes this, yeah.
Is there a lot of the shelf thing we can get?
Iron mountain, like absolutely. I mean, that's they did it for me. They did a big project where I worked for the U T. I don't have a lot of stuff. There is. Iron mountain.
But they also they also have facilities.
Oh, over the place.
Yeah.
Move on.
Yeah, there's one in Rosemont.
Designed to survive in the Quail Street.
That's what that's why I'm going. So. So what are the next? What are the next steps?
Uh.
Well, I. Andrea, which was to have been having conversations, so she's not here tonight, and I don't know. What? Yeah.
But I thought there, you know, there was going to be talk about they've already like a local law for a clerk.
Well, you don't mean local law for clerk.
No, you just, you know.
Well, things are.
Hire.
Okay, this is yeah, this is just a contract. This is not a full time staff position, right? We're just talking.
I think so.
We were talking about both, both things.
Both things?
Yeah.
Um. I think adding another staff member might be a challenge. If at this point in time, but we could still hire a contractor to come in and work focused just on this process, right?
All right. So that's the key thing. Um, let me speak with Andrea and maybe I can just throw this on the um agenda for next week as well, even though we're having a special.
Yes, yes, put it on the agenda for you.
I don't.
Well, that's two agenda, two agenda.
Two agenda.
Zach and. I can with you.
Hey, yeah. I talked to you guys.
I know I am, but I wanted. We want you to.
How you want to work. What exactly you guys want to do? If it's you want to go. Throw you on there. That's up to you.
Okay.
Well, we were, you know, I would suggest that you get somebody. They'll obviously go around the people that didn't. You get a proposal, it's okay.
Yeah.
And whether that comes out of grants or whether that comes out of. You know, and then we can decide whether it makes sense and how much money.
And how much data is that we have, like, right?
And not just the digitization, but it's the organization and accessibility of.
And the catalog.
We want to develop a filing system.
Yeah.
That's digitized.
And there are people who do it. I mean, I I have hired at the museum when we were digitizing our collection, we hired. There are digital librarians who specialize this. And. They're up here. Uh, so, yeah, they're great.
All right.
Yeah.
But that's cheap.
Not cheap.
Yeah, I know.
No.
But it's costing us money not to have it done.
Correct.
Right.
So this is this is a worthwhile expense.
All right. So we have this on. And then. No feeding doubts.
It's old business.
All right, see. Um, just going, I I did text, just going back to um the burn ban. Sorry. Um, I did. The chief, um, reached out to the chief. He says, we do not, but we follow New York State code with city with city stipulations. Um. He'll get me the stipulations Friday or early next week.
So there are stipulations.
Yeah, so. So I'll get that going. All right. And Lorraine got in touch with me. She has all that information we're looking for.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, so. All right. I um. Can I get.
I just before you adjourn.
It's regarding.
Portland Park Street.
Okay.
I would like to apologize first and foremost for not being here from the start. I was originally told that it would be. It's a planning committee meeting on the twenty second, not the last. My name is Melissa Bialer. I own the property. Um, I did give it just a brief background to know it's late. Folks have. They're working fully. Um, we purchased the property in twenty twenty two to build a private residence for ourselves on. And. Probably in our nativity, naudie, um. Did not quite understand the restrictions on the property. Uh, that followed it from when Mr. Cheris purchased it uh from the city. And so our attorney noticed the uh terms on the title and said, you know, we can't buy this. There's a reverter. That it would go back to the city had you never done anything with this and said, okay, I'll take care of it. And it went to vote. And the reverter go. And those. No, nobody pulls a second title right away for the kind of clerk to file it and then pull a fresh one. We were under the impression that it was all then because it was explained that it was a bygone. Project essentially for the city to develop unused properties. And to get them developed. So we planned on building a single family home, our own effort at affordable housing. We either planned to put a manufactured home on the property. Knowing that New York State didn't allow termination on any backyard homes. Didn't realize city ordinance could affect that. So then we pivoted to modular. Uh, unfortunately, a modular isn't navigable within the city. So unfortunately, all of the building options that we were able to afford. Were off the table. So we did end up per purchasing a home in the tunnel holster and um. April of this year, you know, we decided that we were never going to be able to develop the property. And so April, I spoke with RUCO, I spoke with Habitat for Humanity, and I spoke with uh the Kingston City Land Bank. Kingston City Land Bank's schedule was full. RUCO wasn't interested, and Habitat for Humanity was interested, but. but unfortunately, because they have so many assets tied up in their songage project, would need for us to take a loss on the property significant enough that we couldn't pay off the mortgage that we had. So that is when we brought it to public market. And the cost of attorney, realtor, everything, all we're trying to do is break even on the property. We have an permanent amount of interest. Uh, I believe six people total, every one of which had some sort of intention to develop the property. Um, and every single person that saw the title and the restrictions said it conflicts with the zoning laws. And I can't plan a project and pull permits in that sort of a timeframe. And so it seems like it's getting overlooked and might never be developed if these restrictions remain in place. I apologize for.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll take it up. We're gonna look into stuff and take it up, but thanks for coming.
Of course, and I have the explanation of.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I apologize for taking more time, and I'm not familiar. When you table something at your next meeting?
Correct. Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Talking about title insurance from the truck, is that a problem?
No, believe it or not, yeah, no, we paid for title insurance. Um, we have a mortgage on the, on the property. Um, it's just been a little bit of a formality, I guess, that maybe we should have not overlooked and even now at this prayer point, they mentioned it. And what is your price? Um, so we put it on the market at sixty-nine-nine. Um, to be clear, all of the conversations with potential buyers after attorneys, realtors, capital gains have been break-even, absolute best. And I genuinely pride with all of the local initiatives to make sure that the property got developed. Uh, unfortunately, it looks like we'll have to go bankrupt.
And it's followed up, how much did you purchase?
Well, we paid thirty-six thousand dollars for this.
And that was in two thousand?
Which was market value. But the closing costs on it were about sixteen thousand, the statement. Or we paid sixteen thousand at the table, financed, spread twenty-four, I mean, I really regret the financing by the time we did that. So definitely a lot of lessons learned, but trying to make it right and make sure the property does ultimately meet the expectations. Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so we are. Yeah, yeah, yes, okay, thanks Kwame.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, I got here as fast as I can, but good night, everybody.